Roll call, please.
Mayor Glentor.
Here.
Alderman Codwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi. Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosita.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approve the agenda?
Unapproved.
Back it? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mark?
Okay, we're still awaiting a word from FEMA on the kickoff meeting for the December flooding. So, the Levy District and us are kind of, we applied at the same time for the April event, and I had, when I wrote this, that we hadn't heard anything, we still haven't, but the Levy District got a certification notice, so hopefully ours will be coming through pretty soon for reimbursement on those.
April last year?
April, yeah. They haven't started December, I mean, we haven't had the meeting for December yet. I've had, been to three FEMA meetings.
Okay.
None of which are the meeting. We're still awaiting for a couple of farm leases, but we've got all but two of them, so I'm gonna have to inquire about getting those. We finally have all the documentation, save a couple of pieces that the mayor will sign tonight to send into mode out on the Main Street project, but the contractor is already making plans to get started. Still haven't heard back from Citizens Electric on the pole relocation. About to finish up, Weiner and Riverview, you've probably been aware that the contractor had a couple of problems digging into lines. The lines were not marked properly, so where they dug, there were no markings, and they ended up hitting a pretty big communication cable at the nursing home down and radio station down, but again, it was not a contractor error, it was the locator's error. We talked about the AEDs, and I got bids for those, then Alderman Codwell sent me some information on a grant program. It looks a little bit like a supplier's kind of marketing program, but if the result is a reduced cost for us, I'm gonna do it anyway, so we went ahead and sent that application in. You'll have on the agenda at your next meeting, a public hearing for the action that was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier in the week. We discovered from an inquiry that despite the existence of self-storage mobile homes, self-storage facilities in St. Genevieve, there was no provision for them in any zone district. There was a warehouse provision in C2, and certainly in industrial, but nothing that specifically identified self-storage. So, while that person's not pursuing it, it was a fix we needed to make, because it's a legitimate activity in a commercial zone district, and so the amendment you'll be seeing is to add self-storage to the C1 and C2 zone districts with a special use permit, which gives you an opportunity to consider fencing and lighting and, you know, security, and none of the facilities that are in St. Genevieve today have that. I'm only aware of one problem that's occurred from a fire that seems to have been originated from inside the facility, and so we'll address those as the need arises. Dave is here to talk about it, but the flooding problems we had on North Gaffery Creek couldn't have been avoided probably, but could have been mitigated by the ability to close the gate valve that is in a concrete structure just east of Third Street on the creek. The problem is, it's kind of inaccessible, particularly when you've had enough rain for you to want to close it, because then you've got, it's big and heavy, and you've got to get a piece of equipment back there to raise and lower it, and it just doesn't, it's not functional. So, we're gonna go ahead and order a pipe extension with a flap valve on the end of it, so when the creek is down and it's raining, the water can get out, but when the water comes up in the creek, it'll close, and at least it'll keep it from flooding as long as the water stays in the banks of the creek. Once it comes out of the bank, obviously, we can't, we can't keep it from flooding, but that would take care of a big percentage of the events that we have there where we get water on the street. The, I reported our last meeting that we did not receive the grant from the Community Foundation. Turns out that the committee didn't recommend it, but they didn't recommend against it, they forwarded it to the Community Foundation Board for consideration again, so there's still a chance that we'll be, get some assistance and tree replacements. I met with Citizens Electric on this changeover to LED lighting. It's a little long, a little bit complicated, we were probably, calls for policy decisions I think are appropriate for this board. The economics of it look like for every light that we do, we get about a, we get a payback on the changeover cost within five years.
How much is, what's our cost gonna be for?
Well, before we, rather than go into that, I'd like to hold a work session at our next meeting and have Ron Klein here, and we can go over all the details and answer all the questions.
Fine.
And that concludes my report. Yes, sir.
Wasn't a lot of the flooding on Washington Street due to pumping?
I don't.
Well, the...
You mean pumping on the, on the, the Levy pump?
Right.
Well, when the, when the ponding area got full and got to that elevation, then it would start backing up the creek, and that elevation on Washington Street was the same elevation as what the ponding area was, so that would start backing up there. So, as they started pumping, but when you had that many acres of water to pump down, it took a while to get it down. So, if there was this gate that we could, that could close in the creek, you could pump, even though the water's gonna come up, and it's gonna come up, and it's gonna be there for a little while, I think the biggest complaint was it was there for so long, and it, or for a while anyway, until the pumps caught up with taking the whole 300 acres down of water. So, the idea was that this gate could close, and you could at least pump it back up over, back into the creek, and it wouldn't come back in the Wash, you could at least get rid of it after, it would be after the fact, because you couldn't close a gate during a big rain event, because then you don't know how much water's gonna be coming from this side of the creek, and you'd have, you could end up with actually a bigger mess, because the water would have nowhere to go. So, yes.
But they still weren't pumping with all three pumps, correct?
Yeah, um, the last, the last one, no, one of them was broke, but, but...
Because you could see it down, like it hook and rolls, it all backed up major back in there.
Well, it's made, it's made to do that.
Well, not, not behind hook and rolls. That was the breach in the agricultural Levy water backing up.
When was that breach?
Well, they didn't do it on purpose, well, they did it on purpose because they thought that by reaching it, that then the water would go through the area that they, that they lowered, and it would save the balance of the Levy. It didn't work. They went ahead and did that, the water backed up into that field, but then the river continued to rise and took out the, that blowout on the agricultural Levy that they're now trying to get the Corps of Engineers to repair quickly.
I thought that was down around Cotton Woods, though, where that blew out.
What's, what's the...
I'm just curious, why it backed up so bad?
Well, because of that.
But we're on this side of the Levy.
That's ponding area too, though, isn't it?
I don't think so.
Wouldn't make any sense.
I don't think it should get water in it until, until that Levy was cut, would lower.
That shouldn't get on this, I'm almost like you, I don't think it should get on this side of that Levy.
No, well, it is ponding area.
Well, I know at one point Bernie Bowman said the one pump didn't work, but then later on, he said they did, I thought he said they did get it working towards the end.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, but we've had, we've had the one rain event even before that, where all three of them were working, and it, they couldn't keep, they couldn't keep up.
Keep up, right.
You know, it's, it's really hard to design a system that's gonna take 11 inches of rain in two or three days.
No, everything has its limitations.
It's just not gonna work.
And when they're exceeded, they're exceeded. Now, couldn't things have been a hell of a lot better? I think so. I think they could handle a lot better. That's water on the bridge now, and we're addressing it.
The river was high, and the creeks were already high before we got that rain, so that's, that was a factor there, too.
But Dave, this should enable us to be able to, at least once the rain stops, to be able to get the water off of Washington Street in a matter of a day or two, don't you think?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But like I said, a little four-inch pump is gonna take forever, we're gonna have to have manpower there all the time, but for now, until we can, you know, I'm gonna check with Surplus from Jeff City to see if maybe they have something, or put us on the waiting list, if we have any money available to buy something like that. Because with a six-inch pump, we can get in and get it out of there, you know, in a matter of time, but like I said, with four-inch, a little gas power, we're gonna have to have a little shelter, you're gonna have to have somebody there 24/7, because y'all know, you know, you can't, 45 minutes probably is max on that, so somebody's gonna have to be there at all times to watch it.
And you can, you can rent a pump, but then you have to run the risk of it being available when you need it.
Yeah, it's probably not likely.
Then you're looking at a four-inch pump that, you know, all the debris and stuff that's in there, it'll get clogged up a lot faster. You know, with that big pumps, they'll, they'll dry a lot of that stuff up.
And I don't want to spend any of the money that we have set aside for the 3 million that we got set aside, but this certainly would qualify to be able to use some of that money to buy.
And what you're proposing, this is self-regulating, so when it's moving in the right direction, it pushes it open, and when it's not, it closes.
Right.
Makes sense? Still, water's gonna pond there.
It is.
Because, because once the creek water is higher than that elevation...
It's always gonna seek its own level.
It's, water's gonna pond there. I don't think the valve's the answer, but, I mean, I looked at it, stood there with Bernie for half an hour, talked about it, and the idea that, that, I just don't think that's the answer. It won't hurt anything, that's for sure, it will help a little bit.
It is not the ultimate solution, but it will take care of those kind of events where you get the quick flash flooding.
Only, only after the creek goes down, so the water can flow through the pipe into the creek.
No, because the flaps should close, and we should be able to pump back over the top of the Levy.
I agree with them, that's, we have to have a pump.
Yes, we have to have a pump.
That's what I was getting at, is the pipe alone and putting the valve on, it's not the answer. We still have to have a pump.
Correct, correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric.
Good evening. Eric. Short staff report there, it's kinda... Kind of in a rush Tuesday. I don't really have too much to report. There was one thing that I'd like to add on that, just a kind of a progress report on our K-9 program. Since, it was deployed, really since December of this year, he's been deployed on 43 traffic stops, or 43 times of that. He alerted 17 times, and we've located drugs and seized drugs and made arrests 16 of those times, so of the 17 times he's alerted, it's been successful, so it's really a good program.
Were any of those kind of stashed where we might not have found it had it not been for the...
There was actually one last night, I can't really get into too many of the specifics.
Just generally speaking.
Yes, there is a motor vehicle exception for, for traffic stops, it's a search warrant exception, since a vehicle is, is mobile and can leave, and you can't necessarily secure it to go get a search warrant, there's a vehicle exception, motor vehicle exception with a K-9 sniff, so it got us into a locked facility, or locked compartment in the vehicle that we wouldn't normally have been allowed into, and made a pretty decent case, I believe.
So, you're saying most of those, you wouldn't have known that they were there without the dog?
Correct.
So, there's no permission needed if the dog...
That's correct.
If the dog...
If the dog rakes.
If the dog rakes.
What's that? Exactly, exactly. What, what is two times nothing? Exactly, so no, he's doing really well. I reported at the last meeting again about our cameras, we've gotten some of those installed, and we're still in the process of getting some of the hardware that we need to, to help download all of that. We have put in for the Community Foundation grant, you know, we're hopeful that we get funded fully. If not, I still think that that's something that I'd like the board to consider as far as a budget amendment and helping to fund that the rest of the way, and get the rest of our cars outfitted with those cameras.
What are we looking at per quorum?
Total project was 40,000, we had 20,000 of that, so we made a $20,000 grant proposal. I'm hoping, I'm hoping for all of it.
Whatever you get.
Whatever we get, I mean, if we get, if they fund half of that, then I'd be asking for $10,000 to complete the project.
Okay, good.
And all the staff is, is doing well, we're still at full staff, and everybody's playing well together, and doing a good job, so.
Great.
Do you have any questions specifically? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Evening.
How's everybody doing? All right. Doing good. As you look on my report, they're kind of short, but it's, we've been doing a lot of stuff in the park, kind of, a lot of stuff that's been neglected for quite a while. We are trying to get it fixed up, make the park look good. Like picnic tables, for example, you know, we got taken completely apart, and we redid the frames and wood, and a lot of the wood we replaced. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm probably gonna go over budget. I mean, there was no money in the park budget at all for doing stuff, and like I say, for landscaping, I'm gonna be a little bit over that, but it's one of them where we had to do it, because a lot of the playground equipment only had just a little bit of mulch, you're supposed to have at least a foot of cover underneath all playground equipment. And, but like I say, we're trying to get everything caught up. Today, I had the guys going through all the mowers and making sure everything's ready. We found a lot of stuff that was neglected, that, it won't be neglected anymore, because I think y'all know me by now, we're pretty high on maintenance, you know, because you guys make me keep stuff forever, so we have no choice.
Didn't think they would, we had.
Uh, there was like 23 of them up there, and I actually need some more, so I'll kind of ask the park board if we can get some more, you know, out of some of their money.
There you go.
They're a little tight, they, they're like you guys, they won't give me much. We can only do what we have to work with.
You cannot spend, but you do not have.
Exactly.
There you go.
Any questions or anything? Okay, I want to talk a little bit about mosquitoes. Yeah, I mean, I don't know much about it, other than what I've heard, and I'm sure that a lot of people don't know that much about it. The only thing I'm gonna ask the people out there is that, you know, since we're not fogging, that, you know, any water source around your house has to be eliminated. If you have any questions, call me, I will personally come to your house if you're a city resident, and I will, I will kind of give you an idea of where, you know, and where the mosquitoes are breeding, and as you probably all know, if you've been outside, they're out already. They've been out for a couple months.
Yeah, they have.
And, well, like I say, I've seen where, you know, they recommend, you know, get anything with high deed in it, but, you know, Mr. Couch asked me about why I keep saying that what we was doing with mosquito fogging wasn't right. Well, the reason why it's not right is because we should, in a town of our size, along the river, we should be doing it twice a week. But if you look at it, you know, when that fogger goes by, it's got like a 10-foot span. The only thing that does is kill mosquitoes that are flying. Doesn't kill it on the ground, or in bushes or anything, because if you do that, then they don't want all that, because it kills everything. But also, to start with, you're supposed to do surveillance, you're supposed to have little baggies out, you know, with oxygen and stuff to catch them, then you're gonna have to have a couple guys doing that day and night. Then you turn around, then you gotta have a little microscope, you gotta have a freezer, you gotta have, and then you sex them, to tell what kind of mosquitoes they are, and trust me, I'm not smart enough to figure out that, there's names that long, you know, and then you send it, you freeze it, you send it to Cape, or drive it to Cape, and then they tell you what it is. This is a daily thing. So, this is something here that I would recommend to somebody to where they, they go to the county health. You know, county health is one, should be doing this, not just the city, because when I went to class over, back in, gotta go where year it was, St. Louis County Health is one, takes care of that. You know, and like I say, to do this, you have to do it properly, we don't have the manpower or the, or the money to do it. We were spending $30,000 a year just for mosquito fogging, that wasn't counting the labor, and it really wasn't doing any good. Yeah, because, well, and mosquitoes will fly like 12 miles, you know, and they go for your breath, you know, they go for the carbon monoxide. So, I mean, it's, yes, a lot of people could call, and we'd start fogging again, but we're wasting money, and we're not really helping anybody. The only thing we're killing is the ones that are, it's hitting. I mean, I'm sure some of you won't remember, but, but some of you will, the old mosquito fogger, we used to have these to mix the chemicals with diesel fuel, and they left the fog as big as this room, you know, of course, us kids used to ride behind them bicycles, and, you know, they said, oh, that'll kill you. Yeah, look at me. Yeah, I lost one leg, and, you know, only got one eye, but I'm okay. But, on a serious note, I mean, the mosquito fogging really didn't do any good. It just, you know, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of times I felt that, you know, because it was out there, when they passed by, I thought it just made them mad.
Dave, did anybody ask you to bring back the fogging?
No.
I mean, it's all, it's already...
No, but I just want to let people know, because I've had a lot of questions why we're not, so.
How many people asked?
Yeah, I want to try to explain why, you know, because it's really a waste of money, and in order, unless the county would, you know, health department, whatever, would get involved and do it right, you know, then that's the only way that it really would do any good. There's mapping, there's all kinds of stuff that you have to do, you know, I mean, it's not just throw some mosquito stuff in a truck and drive around.
Is there any, I guess, advice for just people that are outside in their backyard? Is there any things they can do besides getting rid of the water?
Yeah, well, like I say, the main thing is getting rid of water. A mosquito will farm in a, you know, tablespoon of water. I mean, if you throw your beer can out, towers are the worst thing, you know, because it's dark, and they get in there, you know, they don't like the light. So, like I say, if you leave a beer can out, soda can down, you know, just a tablespoon of water, and you could take a white star foam cup, if there's any water source there and it's kind of dark, slowly dip that in there and let it settle, and look, you got these little, look like worms coming up?
Mm-hmm.
That's a mosquito, it's getting ready to turn into the, you know, the, whatever they do, you know, turn into a mosquito, and if you have any questions on that, just take a little bit of table, of vegetable oil and put in there. It smothers them, they can't breathe in. That's what the biscuits we put out. That's the best thing we can do right now, is put biscuits, which we usually do that, you know, this time of year, and I was gonna do it this week, but with all the rain...
In addition to eliminating sources of standing water, there's some naturally ponding areas, like in, we can, we can put the larvicide out.
Yes.
And address those, those areas?
Yeah, yeah, them, them biscuits are good for 30 days, so, and they're not really that expensive, you know, I, can you remember, things like 72 cents a piece, or something like that? I mean, you go to Buckeye's and buy them too, but...
I think we were charging like $5 for six of them, or...
Yeah, I thought they was like 72 cents, you know, I might be wrong with, you know, it's been a while since I looked at receipts, but, you know, like I say, if you got any water standing, like low pond or anything, throw them in there, you know, it doesn't hurt your animals, and...
Other than that, if you're gonna be outside, just use your...
Use the, you know, cutter and all that stuff, whatever's got a lot of deed in it, you know.
Citronella candles or, you know, anything like that?
No, I don't, other than they stain.
Well, I know, but that's, that's something.
I've tried them, I don't, I don't think they do anything. If anything, it's like they attract them, but, you know...
You used to have those giant bug zappers up the park, do you remember that?
Yes.
I don't know that they did that good.
A bug zapper is the, is the best thing to buy, and give it to your neighbor, because what it'll do, the light draws them, that's where you hear all the zap, zap, zap.
Yeah, yeah.
The light draws them over there, they go to that, well, but if you have it in your yard, they're gonna go to your breath. So, that's, your light's gonna draw them to you, then they're gonna deter, go to your breath, so if you buy one, give one to your neighbor.
There you go.
Dave, change the subject. The sidewalks that are, the ones that we've got the big concrete pillars, you guys, you guys were planning on doing those patches, weren't you?
Yeah, well, yeah.
As soon as, as soon as you can, right?
Yeah.
As soon as the weather got, which I would hope is getting to be pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I've had, I've had one or two people ask about...
They need to be...
Yeah, we want to make sure that the weather stayed above freezing tonight, so I think we're gonna be okay, and I think we're gonna be okay taking our snow stuff off, too, so...
Talking about, talking about mosquito spraying, you guys want to hear a good story?
Yeah, Doug.
And this is funny. One, 30 years ago, when I was a mayor, we had an older guy that worked for us in the city of St. Jimmy, and David knows who I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Good old guy, nice guy. We were talking one day, I said, Mr. Madison, I said, does that mosquito sprayer really work? Does it really kill mosquitoes? He said, let me put it this way, sonny, he said, I could sit on the back of that truck with a BB gun and kill more mosquitoes than what that thing kills. I laughed so damn hard.
Dave, you got anything else?
No, I think that was enough.
All right, good.
Okay, thank y'all, have a good day.
Thanks.
Anything else, anybody? Any public comments? I bet it looked like it. Okay, minutes from February the 25th.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2016 12, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri stating intent for the St. Genevieve Welcome Center to apply for a grant with the St. Genevieve Municipal Band Grant Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2016 13, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute a proper mayor's agreement with Darryl Palmer, Sr.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How long did these last?
Three years, three years.
Three. Did they pay anything?
No.
I'm just curious.
I don't, do those a favor?
Yeah, they agreed.
I know, but I, I thought it was like a dollar.
Well, it's a nominal dollar, it's in the least, but...
Yeah, well, I, I was thinking it was just some kind of, and that, that isn't good.
It could be $10, we're not gonna collect it.
But he, he's got that looking good down there, he's done a real good job with that park that he's got.
Okay, old business, bill number 4091, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for professional services with Top and Associates of Springfield, Missouri for sanitary sewer manhole GPS.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rosita.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Codwell.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number 4091 now becomes ordinance 4028.
Thank you, bill number 4092, second reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 235 Parks and Recreation by adding Article 4 Dog Park, Section 236.010, Rules and Regulations to the St. Genevieve Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rosita. Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes, bill number 4092 now becomes ordinance 4029.
Thank you, bill number 4093, second reading?
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Band.
Move to approve. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes, bill number 4093 now becomes ordinance 4030.
Thank you, uh, new business, bill number 4094, first reading?
An ordinance allowing the 2016 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri between April 19th and April 25th, 2016.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we would like...
They need a second reading.
Yes, yes, we do.
There we go.
All in favor, second reading of 4094?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 4094?
An ordinance allowing the 2016 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri between April 19th and April 25th, 2016.
Motion, Alderman, motion to approve, second. Roll call.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes, bill number 4094 now becomes ordinance 4031.
Okay, thank you, bill number 4095, first reading?
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Central Power Systems and Services of St. Louis, Missouri for the preventive maintenance and inspection services of the Water and Wastewater Department's backup generators in an amount not to exceed $4,913.95.
Steve, uh, I was just thinking on this, when we, uh, it's, it's obviously water and wastewater, but would it make any sense, we've got the generator here and I guess the fire department's probably got one, would we get, and I'm not sure who, who we have, if anybody, as far as maintaining those, does the fire department maintain that themselves, bud?
I don't know.
To include all, we might get a better deal if we did it all together, I don't know.
Sounds like it's pretty intense to do, without, with the testing of the fuel and everything, I'm reading okay. Right?
Yeah, what they have is they got about a hundred point checklist that they go over. Uh, there's numerous things on that checklist, if any one of them were to fail, they would